Are we started?
Yeah.
Okay. Welcome, everybody here today and all was watching tonight on YouTube. I will start with a vocal call of council. I counsel to Schwint in present and chair in the meeting. Mayor Shantz.
Present.
Counselor Bryant.
Present.
Counselor Burgess.
Present.
Counselor Kettle.
Present.
Counselor Grant.
Present.
Okay, before we get going on the agenda items, council needs to reconvene in open session. I have a motion to reconvene. Counselor Bryant, Counselor Kettle, all in favor? That one's carried. I'll begin with the land acknowledgement. I want to acknowledge the land on which we live has been here from time immemorial. The indigenous people have lived here from time immemorial. I thank the Shenautan, also called the Hadawandran, Anishobi, and the Hados Nisoni people. We lived here and care for this land and continue to share and steward this land with us. May we together learn to care for each other, our flora and fauna, the land that sustains us. Do any counselors have any declarations of pecuniary interest? Not seeing any. There's no items to come forward from closed sessions. We do have a public meeting tonight, so the only portion of the meeting is for information only. No decisions will be made tonight. Any questions can be directed to development services staff following the meeting. I'll declare this planning public meeting to be open. Starting off, I'll ask senior planner Stephen Dykstra, who's on Zoom, I believe, to present the information report on zone change application ZC two twenty twenty five for Floridale Parkview Manor. Mr. Dykstra.
Yeah, thank you. Um, first I'll, uh, I'll show you my screen here. Hopefully that works. Are you able to see my screen?
Not yet. There we go.
Excellent. Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Steve, um, presenting this application. Uh, it's for a zoning bylaw amendment and let's go to the next slide. Okay, it says forty, uh, sorry, thirty Floripine, um, uh, road, which is in the hamlet of Floripine. It is, uh, as you can see here, located on the easterly side of the town, um, on the outskirts of it. It's surrounded by the, uh, agricultural lands to the east. We've got some residential to the west. Uh, north of it is a, uh, school and to the south is the, um, uh, the reservoir. So the purpose of this zoning bylaw is it's currently zoned R1. It has a special section that permits what's on the lands. And they're going to R1 as well, uh, with a special sixteen, a special section sixteen. And we don't know the number that it's going to be, but, um, the change is to permit an additional twelve, twenty dwelling units. And it will be in the format of ten semi-detached residential dwellings. Okay, uh, the official plan, the official plan already permits this. This just shows you what the, uh, designation is, so no changes to the official plan. And here we are with the zoning bylaw. Again, it's, uh, it's, uh, zoned R1. The proposed will still be R1, uh, but the site-specific provision would allow, uh, the number of units to increase from forty-one to sixty-one. And those twenty units would be provided in, uh, semi, uh, ten semi-detached dwellings. You can see the, um, lands there to the east and it's got the hatching over it. Here's, uh, what we received so far as a conceptual plan, um, in the highlighted red areas. Uh, those are the ten semi-detached dwelling, uh, units. Uh, as you can see, they're configured right now, uh, using, uh, the, well, they'd have to also, um, adjust the, uh, the driveway. Uh, there's some additional parking and this is the current configuration, although it could change later on based off of, um, all sorts of different, uh, possibilities. Um, but they're also, it's the, the zoning bylaw that there or the, the configuration here doesn't require any other additional setback requirements. This concludes my presentation, um, and yes, this was a, for a public PD, uh, public meeting. Um, this is to provide, uh, information to council and to the public. Uh, as you know as well too, no decisions are made at this meeting. And we're going to continue working with the applicant and public and also report back to staff or report back to council when, uh, all the topics have been addressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Does council have any questions for staff or the applicant? Uh, the planner, Mr. Black is here tonight along with Ms. Super Baker. Counselor Kettle.
Thanks, Chair. Through you, uh, to Mr. Dykstra, um, there's a number of studies to support the application. I don't see a traffic study and given that there's a school directly to the north of this property and this is going to increase the traffic there, I'm wondering if a traffic study would be warranted.
Uh, we can look into that, but, uh, I mean, it's, it's twenty, um, units. And it's, it's also for retirement residents, uh, so the, the actual, um, requirement for, um, parking is actually less usually for, uh, retirement residents. Um, but I can look into that. I'll see if that is a, uh, required, um. What we'll need to do for that.
Any further questions? Not seeing any. I'll ask Clerk Smith, are there any unregistered participants for tonight's meeting?
There are not any additional ones, but you could call for the audience.
Okay. Anybody in the gallery who'd like to speak to this? Mr. Black?
Just for council's information, um, this proposal is a life lease proposal where, uh, people who would reside in the semis would buy a complete interest in the property. And that interest then would allow them to occupy a unit. And it's usually for the lifetime of that occupant. So the, the difference here is that, uh, these semis are not fronting on a public road other than Floripine Road. And the access into the property then acts as sort of the frontage for the semis. So, uh, we would like to make sure that the site plan proceeds along and gets to the point of being approved to make sure that we have, uh, covered everything in the site-specific zoning bylaw to make sure that we don't have to come back to committee of adjustment later on. Uh, other than that, uh, there is a need, um, there's a waiting list, uh, to purchase these, uh, interests in the property. And I think there's a waiting list of twenty people to go into the forty-one unit apartment complex if and when they become available. So there definitely a need for this type of use, uh, in the township. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? I don't see any. Thank you for that information. And not seeing any other people in the gallery who wish to speak, I'll declare this public planning meeting to be closed. And moving on, this meeting is going fast and so is the dates coming up to the Maple syrup festival. So tonight we've got one presentation from the terror of the Mayor Maple syrup Festival Committee, Matt Jessup. Welcome back, Matt.
Hello, council and, uh, hello, Mayor Shantz. So we'd just like to, uh, do a historical, um, invite, which we usually come to the, the council meetings leading up to the festival to extend a, a warm welcome to the festival. Uh, today, um, my, well, my name is Matt Jessup, but today with me is, uh, the vice chair, Mark McKinney. Um, he is the incoming chair for next year, um, so I'm going to pass it on to Mark.
Great, thanks, Matt. Yeah, we're very excited again as usual and welcome everybody to join us on Saturday. If you could do anything about the weather forecast, really much appreciated. Uh, I want to thank, uh, council and, and staff for all the support. Uh, as we get closer to the festival date, lots of moving parts and we've had a tremendous amount of cooperation with respect to everything we've been looking for, so thank you very much for that. Uh, as Matt mentioned, this is last year as chair and I look forward to, uh, two years of being chair and, uh, look forward to getting back in front of you next year and in front of staff a few weeks leading up to the festival. So thank you very much again. Um, one of the fundraising efforts that we put some time into is the production of what we call festival cones. Uh, we made, uh, five thousand of them over the space of a few days, uh, last week. And I'm going to leave a dozen here, so now we're down to forty-nine hundred and eighty-eight, uh, which will sell on festival day. So I'd like to just leave those, uh, the, the ends here and just hope that you're able to dig into one of these festival cones. They're, uh, they're really delicious and, uh, just so you know, there are twelve and it looks like there's about ten, so you'll know if someone's, uh, taken one too many, okay? So thank you very much again. Welcome, uh, and we look forward to seeing you on, uh, festival day. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And, uh, one final, final thing I was just going to say to echo Mark's words is that we do really appreciate the township's cooperation and coordinating this event. Last year we suspected there were eighty-five thousand people at the festival, uh, which contributed to sixty-six thousand dollars going back to the community directly from vendor proceeds, which we get as the festival. Not only that though, it's a, it's a larger economic picture and impact on the community and, uh, we really, we really feel that it's, it's an important part of spring. It brings people out, uh, after a long winter, especially one as harsh as this. And, uh, we're, we're just happy to be able to host, uh, such a wonderful event. So thank you very much and, uh, we'll look forward to seeing you on Saturday.
Thanks, Mayor Shantz.
Thanks, thanks for coming in and I just want to say thank you for all the work you do. It takes a tremendous amount of work behind the scenes to, to pull this off and, and you've been doing it every year for sixty-one years now, I think. And, uh, yeah, I really appreciate, uh, you, you and your team and everything you've done for the community. And I also know in, in some ways it's a homecoming for people that have grown up here. And so we, we just invite the world to our, our homecoming week, weekend.
Perfect. Thank you. We're looking forward to Saturday and yes, we're all be hoping for sunshine right there with you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
And, and I tried those cones last year, like I, I know sometimes they're, they were really sweet and sugary, but I, I was speaking to, uh, the, someone who made them last year and they're delicious, like way better than they used to be. So whatever you're doing different, it's great.
Oh, that's great. Yeah, they're, they're addictive. We have people who make them end up taking a few homes. There's a lot of shrinkage, uh, even amongst the production team, but, uh, hopefully you enjoy them tonight. Thanks.
Great. Okay. Moving on to delegations, we've got a couple of delegations registered to speak to us this evening. Uh, before we begin, I do have to give some instructions on the process. So each speaker has a maximum of seven minutes. There'll be a timer on the screen. You'll hear a warning when you have one minute left and again, when the time is up. Once you've finished, please return to your seat. You may save the rest of the meeting or leave when you wish. Council will hear from all the speakers and ask questions of clarification and then council discussion and debate will start after all the presentations have been made. So starting outside Alicia Jones. About the township program in Conestoga.
Thank you. Um, I wish I'd known seven minutes because I would have had organized notes instead of my, write them as I put them. Um, but basically the current situation of township in Conestoga is an absolute mess. It is everywhere. It is in everyone's homes, tires, it is on pets' feet. And it's actually going to be quite a safety hazard coming in the spring because it is in such giant piles. Um, it's kind of hard to see with the snow, but that pile there is approximately this high of just straight up township and it's hard to say how much around it is, but basically kind of you can see one lump over into the driveway. Um, and this is just simply one. And that will be mowed by, uh, whichever vendor mows the park. But then these are everywhere, so everyone's yard has large chunks from the plows where the, uh, chip has basically come off of the road. It doesn't seem to be moving. Is it on? I'm trying to, okay, there we go. So here's another side view kind of showing just how large that is simply a pile of chip. Goodness me. Um, this is just a simple showing of an average winter day. It gets stuck in our tires. It goes all the way up our driveway. We then have to sweep it back down to the road, but there's times when it simply ends up on the side of our driveway. And it's not exactly going to be an easy cleanup. What you see in black there is all chip. Just stuck in the snow. So I'm going to go a little quicker. Um, again, it's not a stark contrast because everything's still kind of gray from the winter. But what you see slightly green is grass. Every other large chunk of gray is giant piles of chip. That is not the road. That is the grass on the edge of Evening Star Lane. And I will admit a lot of these are Evening Star Lane, but here's just a standard average little bit. That is not something that is going to be easily cleaned up along many people's roads when it's time to actually, or yards, I should say, when it's time to mow. Um, myself, I measured and I have about two hundred and fifty feet of now yard that needs to be cleaned up. And there's parts of it that are honestly taller than me, five feet into my yard. This is quite a hefty amount to clean up and where you see and that's kind of a lot of what the park looks like right now along all edges of the park of Conestoga Community Park. This is kind of what you see on a lot of the township roads right now. Um, you see bare road with little chunks of chip and the majority of the chip actually mowed or, um, plowed onto people's yards. So that is my yard right there, starting close to the corner. And I don't even remember how far it is down, but that tiny little strip of kind of brown past the end of the fence is my neighbor's yard. And that's approximately five feet in to show a little more. That's the corner. That is not going to be mowed without damage to mowers and potential injury to anyone close by. Everything gray unfortunately is township. That is for land when it meets up at the school. That is for land when it meets up at the school. I really feel that everything that you see is gray. This unfortunately I took a lot of pictures. Or fortunately, I guess for the residents of Conestoga, because this is not something we feel we can clean up physically and either put back onto the road. Some people don't have shop vacs. Some people don't have the physical ability or even the time. That is my side driveway and about five to six feet up and in. This large chunk here is where a large chunk of the chip froze into grass. And because it was in a pile, when a plow came, this entire frozen pile ripped up. And that green wire that you see there is unfortunately my lawnmower wire. I have a robotic lawnmower and I now have to rewire the entire side yard, which is rather long. So what you see here is reflective of my entire yard and a lot of people in Conestoga. I think that might be my video, but I took a video one day of my foot basically scraping against the ground. And it's as if I was in a sandbox. Understand that. The application, I would say, was not successful. The rolling was maybe not successful. And to be honest, I'm quite concerned for the safety of the residents. We have grass dying. Animals are unfortunately being injured. The tar is being trudged into people's houses. And really thinking about this, children can't really ride scooters. People are finding it hard to push strollers. And this is something that is, I would say unreasonable for us to be requested to clean up. I did make mention of this to Mr. Ed Pereira and I felt rather dismissed saying, well, we're going to street sweep, just rake it back in. Raking piles of gravel kind of just disperses it. It doesn't really put it to a new location. Think of what I haven't mentioned yet. I would actually like to know, is there potentially a landscape vacuum that we have or a street cleaning vacuum? I've seen them in large cities, big giant hose that can come down and vacuum because I feel like simply raking is not going to work. I have a lot more to say. I wish I'd had more than seven minutes. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and presentation. Do we have other delegates on this issue? Just look forward. And if you could just say your name for the record, please.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jerry Shaberno. I live at 120 Flax Mill Drive in Conestoga. I guess my main issue here is the mess and I say devastation because it literally has destroyed many of our lawns. I have about 150 feet of frontage, which is now basically embedded with the gravel. I've tried to walk my dogs across the gravel, which has now required me to get stitches in their feet, which is a problem. The tar has now made its way through my house onto my hardwood flooring, which as a contractor I'm able to fix, but these are things that, you know, the average homeowner in Conestoga is dealing with right now. I don't think it's something that we should be having to clean up ourselves. It has caused a lot of devastation and I guess we are curious as to who is going to be responsible for the repairs of these issues. It literally is almost every home in Conestoga that this tar and has been done, that this issue is happening. Sorry, just trying to read some forenotes. Yeah, no, it's all good. How, um, has this been done anywhere else in any other township? Has there been some sort of standard set that on a stogel thought, or you guys thought this would be a good idea to do in Conestoga? I guess would be a question I would present to you guys. I tried to find information about it, but I was unable to ascertain any information. Or why weren't we, our roads paved? As a contractor for over 30 years, this is like, soon as I saw this go down, I was absolutely mortified knowing that this is exactly what was going to happen. And everything that I saw actually has now come to fruition. It's not just me. All my neighbors are quite upset. Everybody's quite upset. So we want to know who's going to clean up the mess. Cause there's no way that I should be having to now try and, because I've tried blowing it out. It's not blowing out. It's embedded into my soil. So I now have to rake it out and then I'm going to have to top soil and then I'm going to have to seed or sod. And we're not talking just a little area. I know she said five feet, but I've probably got six to eight feet. I've also got it all sorted through my river rock into my drainage. It's, it's, it's a big problem. I don't know what the plan is for repairing this, but we would definitely like to know what's going to happen with this in the future. And what, what we're going to be able to rectify in terms of repairing this. That's really all I have to say.
Actually had someone park on my lawn confusing it for the street because there's that much chip. Which is then embedding it further into my yard.
Sir, comments?
Yeah, I don't, I don't even know what to say. It's going to be, it's, it's pretty devastating. Like we're literally going to have to spend hours of our, probably weeks of repair for me to, to get it to the point where I'm pretty much good to go.
Counselors have questions. The delegates are for staff on this. Counselor Bryant?
Thank you. Through you to the delegates. Is this the first year you've noticed this problem or is this something that's been going on year after year?
Well, this is really the first year that this has happened.
This is the first year for the plant?
First year of the tar and chip. So this is the first year that it's happened. But like, even when you lay the tar and chip, you could, even after, immediately after it was done, the chip was coming off the tar. So in the summer, when it was hot, that tar doesn't stick to the ground. That tar is now on your shoes. It's on your feet. It's on my dog's paws. All that stuff is now being carried into my home. So these occur like, you know, we're talking not just hundreds of dollars, we're talking thousands and thousands of dollars of damage created by the tar and chip. We're now responsible on paying for, which I don't think is right.
And the previous application of tar and ship on my street and particularly my one corner that I share with Theodore Street was disintegrating so much and because I don't have a clear curb, everything slopes down into a sewer. Unfortunately, delivery trucks, garbage trucks, flowers, they all kind of cut the corner and I would say for the size of this desk, kind of back, my corner was just mud with old tar and chip chunks mixed in with it where it was flaking so much that I had to shovel it into piles and then I would contact Cher Swind, who would send someone out to clean up the piled tar and ship because it was just there in chunks about the size of dinner plates, which I now thankfully have my corner paved, but it was just massive tired grooves of mud and tar and chip.
Can I follow up on Counselor Bryant's question to staff? When was the last time tar and ship happened in Conestoga?
I can't tell you exact year, but it's somewhere on a seven to eight year cycle for tar and chip for each tar and chip room.
Thanks.
On, on Flax Mill, that was our first year with the tar and chip. And it's been a nightmare.
Counselor Bryant?
I guess the next question is for Carter, if I could. Are we planning to clean this up? And if we are, when would that be happening?
Through you, Chair, to Counselor Bryant. So we sent a sweeper went through the area a few weeks ago in that just a quick run through during the warm weather we had in the March break time. We, we just performed a road inspection of all our granular and our tar and chip roads just last week and the beginning of the week before. As far as sweeping, we're just starting into our spring sweeping program so that the opportunity is for the property owners, if they'd like to sweep it out, similar to what we do with gravel roads where they get the impact of gravel off of the the shoulders and the gravel roads. They, they put it onto the roadway and then we incorporate it on the roadway with our graders on that type of instance. Otherwise in the sweeping program, they could put it out to the edge of the road and we would sweep it from there. But our program for sweeping is going to take about a month and a half. We'll be through the township in the, probably about a month and a half. So we could do two runs if needed through Conestoga to give residents there enough time to put it on the roadway.
Could you appreciate though, that some people do not have the physical ability or the proper tools to actually get it on the road in that time?
Got to be careful here on process. Start with questions from council to the delegates. Then we'll move on to staff questions to try and keep them separate. So for council, any more questions for the delegates? Delegates, sorry. Counselor Grant, sorry.
I had a question for Carter.
Hold that one for a second. Not seeing any more questions to the delegates. We'll have discussion now with staff, which I'm sure you'll be interested in. So Counselor Grant?
Thank you. Through you to Mr. Maguire. I'm wondering, is this the typical type of application we see? I've had tar and chip in roads in Mary Hill and if I haven't seen the, the same degree of debris moving onto the side of the road, but I, I'm, I'm wondering when this was applied last year. Was it a typical application timeframe or was it pushed back later? I'm just kind of wondering if maybe that was a contributing factor.
Through you, Chair, to Counselor Grant. Last year's program was actually earlier in the year than the previous year in 2023. We were able to pad in July and apply the tar and chip by the second or third week of August in 2024. We did have a, a good fall for the, for the tar and the chip or the chip to work into the, the emulsion. We did do an inspection in November where it was meeting the requirements of the tar and chip. But we had on our inspection there last week, we did notice there are some deficiencies that we're working through with our, our geo, geo consultant, our road tech engineer, as well as we're reaching out to the contractor that applied the product. Cause we are seeing a little bit more failure than we'd like on, on some of the roads that we, we, we perform that tar and ship on. There was other sections. We actually did Floripine, Kenning Place, Pine Creek. Or else, there are other roads that we did. So it was a two day process for this. So we saw a good application in day one and we're starting, we saw some deficiencies coming through in the town of Conestoga, which was our second, the, the second day of the work. So we, we are still working through that to determine what might have been an issue to cause some of the excess chip. There is always going to be a cast off of some aggregate from the tar and chip application. They have to put more aggregate down to allow absorption. If there's not enough aggregate, then you get a bleed through the emulsion, which creates a very slippery condition. So they will always apply a slightly more than what's required for the road to ensure that everything is then emulsified together and, and worked, worked and kneaded into the emotion.
Thank you for that. And just maybe to follow up. So I appreciate that there's always going to be a little bit of cast off, so to speak. With this, I know that a lot of tar and ship, it's, it's fairly loose and as you drive on it more, it gets packed, compacted down. I'm wondering when it comes to the failure of some of the application, if we are speaking with the vendor, would it be able, would we be able to explore looking with them towards a sort of cleanup if we're seeing more debris than we would normally kind of getting onto, onto neighbors' properties?
That would be something we can explore contractually. They're depending on where, where, so where we are with the contract is that we've issued, because timing required in November major completion. We do have some bullback monies. There is just a few vendors that provide this work throughout the township. They were, they did work with us well on Pine Creek. Because we had some issues on Pine Creek after last year's program and they did work with us to be able to do some follow up work into this year's program. So they are, they are good to work with. I can't speak to where their limits are, but it is something that we are exploring with them now that we're reaching out to then hopefully have a site meeting with the conditions that we have on our tar and chip roads and see where we go from there. So it's a little early in the process for me to be able to see what can be done, but we are going through that process to speak with them.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Bryant, Mayor Shans?
Thank you. Another question for Mr. Maguire. I know Mr. Poupay is not here tonight, but do you know if there's plans to pave these roads in Conestoga versus tar and chipping them? Do you know if that's in the future?
Through you, Chair, to Counselor Bryant. As far as our 10 year forecast, no, there is no, there's no plans to then move to a hot mix ash fault. They, they are tar and chip roads and they've been that way for quite some time and we do not have the, the forecast to be, to convert them over to do a full, full profile change within the town.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Shans?
Thank you. My question is kind of similar. Are, excuse me, are all the roads in Conestoga tar and ship? Short of Northfield and Sawmill?
Sorry, you'll have to excuse me. I'm trying to think of all, everything.
Well, most are most.
Come on, I would, yeah, 95% if not more. Yeah, like there might be one small road that's not, but I'm Glasgow, I believe is, portion of Glasgow is paved.
Okay. And, and are we seeing this kind of breakdown on all of the roads in Conestoga?
There are a few roads that are worse than others. Theodore and Evening Star. There is more breakdown there. Yeah, there's kind of pockets within the, within the settlement where you will, we are seeing greater impact or greater deficiencies than other locations.
Have we ever seen this in other years? Like where did we, where did we turn chip in 2023 and how did that go?
2023 was around the Mary Hill area. We did. Sorry, you'll have to excuse me offhand. I'm trying to think. So Pine Creek was one of the roads.
I think Village View might have been one, if I remember.
Yes, yeah. So, and then the year, two years prior to that, we were on Bites and through that area. So we're kind of working, we're working our way through the township that way. Next year or the next program would be through Bloomingdale.
And have we ever had that kind of breakdown?
No, only on Pine Creek was the only road in last year's program that we had some type of failure. A lot of it is, so we do test the emulsion that it shows up every time. There, there are some highlights in this program on the second load that are the second day that received that we're having to work through with the consultant, because we're not quite understanding what they stated when they did their assessment of the emotion. But last year's program, no, we did not have the issues like we, like we're seeing here. It's more so, I'm not sure, and, and based on the winter we had, as we're trying to figure out if it was a, if it's a failure of the, of the product, if it was a combination of the product and the winter that we had with the plowing on the roads where, where we have higher speeds of the plows, we're seeing less of an impact where some of these locations where the plows are moving slowly. I don't know if there's more down pressure or we're scalping more or if salt application caused issues there. I feel like high school, high school chemistry. So I'm not that great at that, but that's where we bring the contractor in to help with that.
Thanks.
Mr. Brenman?
Yeah, just to help out with the mayor's question, because this would predate Carter. The last time that we had similar complaints of this type of nature would have been quite a number of years ago, but it was related to Grandview Drive where we had to actually bring the contractor back to, to do follow up work. Because the initial work did not meet the, the appropriate standard. So, but that would have predated Carter. He wouldn't have been aware of that, I don't think. Yeah, that was quite a while ago.
And excuse me, thanks Chair, through you to Carter. Does the township have any equipment that could assist in cleaning this up or are we contracting all of the, the cleanup?
To you, Chair, through, to Counselor Cado. We do not have equipment that, that would clean that up with the, all we have is a sweeper. We do not have like a leaf vac or a vacuum unit that would be able to. We do not have like a leaf vac or a vacuum unit that would be able to to clean this up.
And I'm I'm asking because I ran into this exact same problem. So I I know what you're going through when I lived in North Bay and uh it was gravel. It wasn't tar and chip, so it was a little different, but I had to use like a power sweeper, a power rake to like blow it, brush it up. And I'm just wondering if this is something that we do on a regular basis and it's leaving residents, you know, with five to eight feet of charred chip on their grass. Could the township not go in with one of those power rakes, power sweepers and just blow it out for a few days? And and I'm leaning on you to see if that would even be possible. I think the equipment wouldn't be cost prohibitive. I think you can rent it for a day for fifty bucks at Home Depot. It's just would we have the resourcing in order to be able to do that in some of these areas that we're laying tar and chip? So really loaded question, and I know that you probably don't have a an answer off the top of your head, but is that something that we could consider?
Uh, on the timing of when you'd have to do it, we would not have the resources uh to to get in there uh to do that work. It it's a loaded question, as you said, because depending on the impact and the the amount of impact, it would be hard to determine what well, how much work there would be there. My concern would be is that if we're not helping out uh properties that border on gravel roads or gravel shoulders where they're getting similar impact with aggregate and we're specifically uh dealing with just the one type of aggregate, it wouldn't be an equitable service. The timing, our right now, our staff are pretty loaded up with the coming out of winter uh trying to do the sign repairs, potable repairs and all the things that come prior to to the warmer weather. Um, it would have to be, it would be a longer process. Even now, we don't get into plow repairs until the end of May.
Uh, thanks for that answer, Carter. I appreciate where you're coming from. Um, I'm wondering at a minimum, would it be worth exploring like an educational piece that we could pass on to residents about the best strategies to clean this up? And I'm sorry, you're probably not going to like hearing that. Um, but if there are easy strategies that could be employed rather than a hand rake, like power equipment that you could rent, like, could we put out on social media or something strategies that homeowners could use to clean up their lawn in a in a way that doesn't overly tax them, for lack of a better phrase?
Uh, for sure. Like, that's the beauty of our communication group here is that we can get messages out quite quickly and and craft that up. That's something that we can look into to get out, for sure.
Council Burgess.
Through you, Chair. Um, yeah, just kind of jumping off Council Kado's question there. The delegates talked about having like a vacuum truck. Would the region have something like that? That we could use or contract them in um to help clean that up and would that work? Because we are talking about being equitable and if it was a poor application, always say I'd want to go after the contractors, but maybe in this unique scenario, it's something we could try and spend a little bit of time on in this unique road.
Uh, the region, no, they do not have any of uh this, this, the leaf vacuum type equipment as well. They, that would be something that you would have to specifically rent to be able to do that. Um, we do have a sewer vacuum truck, but it is not a piece of equipment that would be utilized well to do that type of work. It's not designed to do that. That's the closest that we have, but um it wouldn't perform well in that application. It would actually suck chunk- chunks of of the soil up because it's made to hydroax.
Okay, and some of those pictures they showed, it actually looked like it was affecting the parks. So do we clean that up and how's that done?
Um, I don't know that I've seen this through you, Chair, to council to this degree. So our parks haven't been out yet. They're still in the facility. So we'll have to do an inspection and see what work we'll have to undertake and coordinate with roads or IAs to see if we can uh have it cleaned up by the sweeper.
I can add to that. So in some of the pictures along the edge of the park, you can, you were able to see there was some plow damage. Uh, the one location where you see the guy wires in from the uh hydro pole, that's a location because as we plow Evening Star, we only plow one way and push everything towards the park to try and limit the snow into the properties on the left. It's so as they come in to try and clear the end of the driveway, they turn the equipment into the edge of the parks. There is plow damage. Our staff would go through that out of public works. It's one of our projects that are programs every spring is that we go on and repair plow damage such such as that. So we would go in and and send students in with with some equipment and hand rakes to try and repair some of that. Um, the chip is something new that we typically don't get into, but we would, you know, rate the best we could get out. I know we have impacted some of our properties just from our plowing operations of our own facilities that that uh drop aggregates and piles onto the grass that uh typically the uh the contractor that's doing the turf manage- management repairs in the spring.
Yeah, so if we're already going through it, well, I'm with the parks there and it is shown to be not the greatest application um by the contractor there, I think it would be, I would like to see something being done for the residents that um are having these issues. And because it's out of the ordinary, right? Like there's, as you said, there's always going to be some issues that residents are going to need to deal with, but this is shown to be out of the ordinary and bad application. We're already getting park staff to clean up some of the other areas. It'd be nice to be able to continue on some of those roads.
Council Grant.
Thank you. Yeah, I I see where uh Mr. McGuire is coming from, the equitable kind of standpoint where if we're not doing this cleanup for gravel roads, we maybe wouldn't want to be doing it on all tar and chip roads. But I do um resonate with the residents when they say that this is seems to be above and beyond the normal type of debris we may see and that if there are some deficiencies obviously in this application. So I would really ask staff to kind of keep us abreast of their discussions with the vendor um and see if we can push for them to do some sort of remediation when it comes to this work. Um, whether it's, you know, they're renting out a vacuum uh truck that's able to do that cleanup for those residents. Um, I I would just like to see kind of us address this. Uh, I also have a a few concerns when it comes to the tar and ship and the environment. If we're seeing this much of debris kind of coming off the road, um, knowing with the the amount of snow that we had melting, we had a lot of water move at movement. Um, so I do have some concerns maybe with our our drainage systems kind of being blocked up by some additional tar and chips. So I don't know if if Carter, you would know if this would be impacting any of our our waterways or any of the drainage that we may be seeing.
Uh, through you, Chair, to uh Council Grant. Um, it, a lot of the, most the areas that we applied this product, there is no storm, like buried storm infrastructure, linear infrastructure in those areas. Um, it, the deposits are put in kind of a row where and they were into the snowpack. So as they snowpack and the windrows melted, it kind of landed in place. Now, the tar, because the sharp edges, it doesn't really travel well by the force of water. It's it's kind of locks into where where it's sitting. So I I I can't say with all certainty that it didn't get into our water courses, but but I don't see a large impact. It there, it's kind of in piles or in windrows left from the plow units along the edge of the road.
Okay, thank you. I I appreciate that.
Yes, I think my first in the conversation is miss staffer working with the vendors still on what kind of recourse and there may, may not be going forward. Not sure if there's a timeline or thought or not.
Um, we are just reaching out because we did the inspection end of last week. We took video of the the conditions that we're finding in place so that if it takes a week or two to be able to coordinate with the vendor to be able to come in place. We have a record of what the condition is at this point after the 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 melt. Um, but we have no timeline yet. Uh, we, I can update council once we are able to meet with the vendor and through and have further discussions with our with our contracted services for the geotech analysis. And we could send a communication out to council for sure to let you know where we are with that.
This will be timed sensitive coming up. I understand there's a whole lot of spring projects are happening, but grass raking is important to their residents. I'm sensing some thought from councils there. If we can do something to help, it may be appropriate depending what the vendor is saying.
The, there is, I know I took a drive through the area today. There is already a resident on Elgin that's raked their lawn out and and everything's out to the roadway. So we um, there are groups that are already bringing it out to the roadway in in that area. I think it's just a timing thing for some of the residents to get in there. Um, again, we can have, take more than one pass through there with a sweeper to try and limit the amount that's still there or if if residents can get it out, but.
I'll admit, I'm still going to see how a vacuum is going to work. Uh, power of boom maybe, but vacuum not so much. Council Bryant.
Thank you. Um, just a request. Can we keep the two residents informed as to what is happening as far as any major repairs or how this is going to work?
Uh, we can, for sure, we can keep some communication with uh with Ms. Jones uh about this. Um, I don't have the information for the other delegate, uh unfortunately, but we can get that. Uh, I I I would not like to get into conversations about where we are with the contractual part of work with the vendor, but for sure, we can keep them
Keep them updated as to.
Of of our processes and like what the decision is coming out of, out of this, how we will deal with this. We still have to have some talks internally. And and then if there's further direction from council, how they'd like to do this, because it would be above the normal level of service. So we have to have it, have to determine that.
Thank you.
So would not they be appropriate at council meeting in two weeks' time?
Yes, we can get an update of where we are.
Realize it may not be complete, but at least an update of the conversation.
If not anything, it will be an update. Yeah, it might be minimal, but we will bring everything forward that we have at that time.
Think about Council Kado and Marisantz.
I'm feeling bad for Carter over there. So this one's going back to Director MacArthur. Uh, would a two week timeline also correspond with your staff's ability to get out to the parks and assess the state of them?
Um, thank you, Chair. No, um, we wouldn't be able to get out and probably do any kind of inspection or we might be able to do an inspection. Um, we won't be able to do any work until Izes out, so be late, late April, early May at the earliest.
If an inspection could happen prior to the two weeks, that would be really helpful, I would think, as well in making some determinations.
Yeah, thank you. Um, just in terms of of sort of service over and above. I think what council is suggesting is that that the um the contractor i- i- if you're finding that the application was in fact um subpar that uh that the contractor would take that on and not our staff.
Mr. Benjamin.
Uh, through you to Carter. Carter, um I personally witnessed the region having a a power brusher that I've seen them use with on gravel roads. Would um would the, would a potential contract with the region and again discussions with the contractor? Um, I I don't know, just trying to figure out, I I've seen the power broom in action. Uh, to your point, uh, Mr. Chair, as opposed to a suction equipment. I've seen how the power broom works on a gravel situation on the off the right away. And i- i- it would the region view or would we be able to contract with the region and then the discussions with the contractor to cover the the extra work and cost?
Um, so when you're saying a power room, are you talking the manual one that's held by staff or that's on the front of a skid steer bobcat unit?
I've watched it in a portion of it.
Yeah, there's, because there's a number of, there's a number of piece of equipment. There's a piece that one that you hold by hand and there's ones that go on the front of like a small piece of it or a skid steer that they usually use for cleaning like gravel aprons with. Uh, that's, that's equipment that can be rent. I'm not sure if the region owns that or if they contract that out. Um, I I can't speak to the ability to bring the region out to assist us, I, because of their workload. Uh, as far as with the contractor, there is, we, there's a certain, just a small amount of holdback that we have. I'd have to see what the exact dollar value is uh with the contractor to find out if it's something that we could hold against them or or the monies that we can hold back. Uh, and then determine what we can be able to do from from that point on. I can't, I can't answer that tonight, unfortunately.
Further comments from council, otherwise I think we're going to hear back in two weeks. An update on where we're at with the contractor and what mediation may or may not be possible. You're good? Awesome.
Will be able to have a closing comment?
Very brief one. I'm going to get in trouble for this, but that's okay.
We are approaching this from a safety concern. Sorry, we are approaching this from a safety concern. This is injuring animals. This is injuring children. And this will be a danger when mowing. Not everything can be taken up. People will be injured. Mowers are going to be damaged.
Thanks. We definitely heard your comments. Lots of conversation fight. I know we'll get an update in two weeks on next steps.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda, we've got consent items, three items for approval. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Council Kado, Council Bryant, all in favor? That one's carried. And then we've got staff reports and memos. So starting out with procedural bylaw midterm review. Call on Director of Carpet Services and Clerk Chef Smith to present the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to uh share my screen uh with council and provide a brief presentation. Uh, if only I could figure out how to do that. We'll get it one day. Here we are. I'm ready to go. Um, so this is a report number two for the procedural bylaw midterm review. Uh, just to provide um council some background. Uh, we already presented to council some amendments, including disrespectful comments, uh, how we would deal with joint council meeting minutes. Uh, no guarantee that technology will work during our meetings. And of course, we did have an issue uh last week, which I'll just pause and say, I think we've uh figured that out uh and we are creating. Um, we have double back, double backups, but now we are doing triple backups to make sure we have even further uh ways to make sure that doesn't happen again. But that's an example of why we want to have that no guarantee technology will work during meetings in our bylaw. Um, how boards and committees would make recommendation to council. We were able to remove one special council planning meeting uh that was scheduled for July and some other housekeeping changes. Um, so on March twenty fourth, uh, of course, council directed us to amend uh bring forward an amended bylaw uh with keeping both council and committee the whole meetings for sober second thought. While redrafting the bylaws, staff staff tried to give control to council for urgent matters um that could come to a special council meeting. We do that uh from time to time when staff thinks something is urgent. Um, we're trying to improve uh what is being decided in one night and and we found it not the best way to uh to bring items forward at the special council meeting through summary of recommendations. Uh, we tried to standardize formatting to make the agenda agenda process faster and more efficient and make scheduling reports easier. So in your package tonight is a proposed bylaw that includes both council and committee items at all regular meetings. I'm going to sort of walk through um what that would look like. The thinking here is that council can decide when an item can be approved at council or considered first at a committee meeting. Then um since the report uh went out, I had a suggestion from uh Council Burgess, which I actually quite like, so I'm going to present that to you as something else to consider. Um, that any member of council can request an item to be moved uh from uh the, sorry, from count the council agenda to the committee agenda by noon on Mondays uh just by emailing uh the clerk's office. And the thinking is that that would, uh, it would be an easier way to move items from the council to committee from the council agenda to the committee agenda in case a member uh wanted some additional discussion. So that's new since uh uh since the report was submitted. Um, we're also looking at adopting a more flexible and public first philosophy, which I'll talk about a little later. So um the new agenda line outline, if approved by council, uh would look something like this abbreviated version here. Um, so this, to start, we would approve the agenda and that again puts more uh power in council's hands. We'd have closed session if needed and then we'd have both council and committee. So some things that might be on the council agenda would be uh what we're calling chair's opening remarks. That's a rebrand uh from moment of silence where the chair often uh speaks about some urgent matters to the community and then takes a moment of silence. Um, consent items and we're proposing that uh include uh approving council minutes, of course, unless anyone wishes to pull them for further discussion. We'd have, of course, council business and then bylaws. And then under the committee of the whole side, we'd have committee business and other business that uh typically ends up being council updates and and things like that before adjournment. So I wanted to um put this in context of of council meetings we've actually had. So for example, on on March eighteenth, it was a council meeting. Um, if the same items came forward at that meeting, I think we'd still have um, you know, things like the Um, if the same items came forward at that meeting, I think we'd still have, um, you know, things like the broad, uh, pride grant request. Aggregate extraction resolution, drinking water summary reports on the council side of the agenda. But I would have moved the procedural bylaw, uh, review, the municipal accommodation tax delegation of authority update. And the other business section to the committee of, of the whole portion of the agenda. At council, uh, the chair would be Mayor Shuntz. The focus would be on things that require sort of more simple approvals. Um, at the committee level, we would have, uh, Chair, um, Counsel Schwint, and then the focus would be more on things that would be discussion based. Uh, if we do the same thing for this evening's meeting. Again, it's a committee meeting, but I probably would have put something like the zoning bylaw on, uh. So zoning bylaw, public meeting on the council portion. We're not making any decisions, but, uh, sort of to put the public first. Uh, we would have the consent agenda, again, things that can be approved quickly on the council side of things. And then there would be an opportunity if bylaws were coming forward to put those on the council side. On the committee side, I still think we would have things like the tar and chip program, uh, delegation, the Almira syrup festival. Uh, procedural bylaw review and then the year-end investment reports, probably a little more discussion focused. The, I also thought it might be helpful for council if I explained, um, sort of some of the issues that I've seen in the past. Where we put things on a council or committee of the whole. So I sort of put together a theoretical agenda, uh, on your screen for you where. Um, we've, we've had some things that have come up, whether they've been at council or at committee where I think they may have. Um, been more appropriate on the opposite, or that council may have asked, uh, to put, to put them on there. So, uh, on the screen there are some things that we've, um, discussed at council and committee of the whole. This is the. Uh, I wrote old, but the current process of doing things and this is the way they happened. Um, the new process, again, I want to be, um, uh, public focused, so I probably would have put. Uh, you, the U-Sports women hockey probably first on the council agenda, um, again, giving more flexibility to staff. Um, we would have put the climate justice working group, um, report on the council agenda because staff said it was urgent. And then I probably would have moved the, um, redistribution, uh, of land transfer tax and GST to municipalities. To the council side of things, because that was a fairly simple, uh, support resolution. On the flip side, I probably would have moved the, uh, track by annual presentation to committee the whole, a little more, uh, discussion focused. Um, we would have moved the asset management plan update there as well. And then in the past, we brought the municipal, uh, digital sign policy and twenty-twenty-five fees and charges directly to council. But had the timing worked, I probably would have moved them to the committee side for, again, that more discussion focused meeting and some more sober second thought for council. Um, but wait, you might say that's not how council would like to organize the agenda. So I could actually see, say, someone around council saying, I'd like to have that rural school speed zone, um. Thing moved to the council agenda. And again, with this new process, council could do that, um, passing a resolution. Uh, started the meeting to approve the agenda. And then I could also see, um, with, even though staff thought it was urgent and important, I could also see, um, a member, a single member of councils. Before noon on Mondays, saying, I'd actually like to move that climate justice working group report to the committee side of things. So what we're trying to do is in the same meeting, we're trying to give council both the opportunity to approve things that are urgent, that are, um. You know, maybe more simple and then have that discussion on the more, um, you know, discussion based on the more, um. Sort of longer discussion kind of items, uh, where again, council would have the ability for sober second thought. So that's kind of the thought process and I hope that makes sense. The last thing I wanted to share with you is just, I, I kind of, uh, had a slide like this in my last, uh, presentation. Um, but basically the meeting schedule in the, currently we have committee, the whole, a break, council break. Um, the proposed is just to have meetings again that have both council and committee. Um, what it would do is it would give council the ability for approval two times each month without, uh, staff scheduling a special meeting. It would also give council the ability for sober second thought twice each month instead of once. Um, from the media and public understanding point of view, um, I'm proposing putting a statement before we switch from council to committee. Uh, something around the idea of recommendations, uh, you know, going forward, require ratification at the next council meeting. Um, and I'm also proposing that we physically switch chairs again, just to give that differentiation between what happens at council and what happens at committee. So, um. Uh, from a council, uh, agenda approval, we typically don't have council approve the agendas that are, that are going out, whether something's on council or committee. Um, of course, you can always defer something that's on the committee agenda now, but again, putting more, more power in council's hands about. Um, what things are on which part of the agenda. Um, counselors still have the opportunity to chair, um, which is the same as current. Um, scheduling, again, it's ea- much easier for, uh, for staff scheduling items and, uh, I believe this will be a more efficient process. Um, because our, our agendas are standardized and we're not creating duplicates when we do special council agendas. Um, so that was a fairly quick overview of what I'm proposing. I hope it all makes sense, but with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions from council.
Counsel Bryant.
Thank you. Through you to Jeff. Um, are we starting with committee of the whole and then going into council? Or is there a format for which is first?
So what I'm proposing is that we have council first and the, the thinking behind that was that you have the approvals. And you have the, um, you know, the bylaw that approves everything that came before it. At the start of the meeting, that's over and done with, and then we get into the longer sort of discussion pieces and the things at the end of the meeting. Then logically, uh, that are subject to ratification, then they, um, the ratification happens at the next council meeting.
Okay, so that was going to be the next question, so I've been asked these by the public, that's why I'm asking. Um, so anything approved at that committee of the whole, second thoughts would be at the next meeting. So that still would fall into the, basically the same format we are using now.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Counsel Purchase.
Through you, Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to say, um, since council is having less meetings now, it was becoming a challenge to give. Staff time to be able to give us sober second thought. Because if they would miss the first committee of the whole, it could be a month and a half before. We could get something ratified, going to the next committee and then going to the council. So we're getting a lot of stuff just stuck on the council meeting and then we didn't have time to ponder it. To have sober second thought or the media, their public to hear about it and discuss it. So. I really appreciate the, uh, clever solution, what you figured out here to kind of give us that flexibility to. Kind of still have that sober second thought and for people to be able to discuss it and see what's happening and, yeah.
Counsel Caddo and Mary Shuntz.
Um, yeah, just thanks for your work on this, uh, Clerk Smith. I think that it does kind of meet all of our needs and, uh, it was a, a creative solution. To some of the, the things that we threw at you, so thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you. I like the separation of council and then committee. I know, um. Over, over time, we've had meetings where it's, uh, we start with council and then we. Move to go into committee and then we come back out to council and that gets confusing. So, so I like that this is council. And then committee and that we change the chair to, to make that distinction. I think that'll be clearer for everyone.
Okay, everyone seems like I did have one question. When comes the public meetings like we had tonight, they tend to be more discussion focused, but they'd be sitting with council though. Because of timelines or they'd be in the committee or something.
Uh, so I would separate them into, uh, probably two different things. Um, for public meetings, most of our public meetings are planning public meetings and we're not making decisions. So I would typically push them to the start of, uh, the council meeting. Um, so again, the public members get to go first. Um, from a delegation point of view, so like we had the, the tar and chip, uh, delegates this evening. I would tend to push that towards the committee of the whole agenda. And then that would also give council sober second thought if a decision was being made at the committee level.
Thanks. Try that again. Counsel Grant, any comments?
No, other than I think this is a, a good solution for moving forward. Um, I'm not sure if there's a recommendation, but if there is, I'll move it.
Perfect. We do have a recommendation to approve this staff meeting schedule and. Bring forth revised draft procedural bylaw for approval at our next council meeting. Second, there, sorry.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just, um, because the proposal to, uh, give council. Um, sort of the preference that us, an individual member can move something from the council side to the committee side. Um, was brought forward after the report was written. That would be, if council likes that idea. That would be, um, an amendment to the, uh, staff recommendation. So just wondering if the mover wanted to move that as amended.
Yes.
Counsel Grant's in favor, the second there is in favor of that. Okay. So we've got the recommendation moved and seconded as amended. Any discussion? Call the question, all in favor? Suppose that one's carried. Perfect. The benefits of sober second and third thought, I guess, on this one. So we'll move on to the year-end investment report. We've got Director Finance, Colm Lynn, to present his staff report.
Uh, thank you, uh, Chair Schwintz and through, through you to the rest of council. Um, there was four financial reports on your agenda this week. Uh, normally they all go on consent reports. Um, the DC, uh, reserve fund balance, the parkland dedication and the council remuneration were already approved. As part of the, uh, consent agenda. Um, I did want to poll the investment report because there are a few differences this year and I wanted to speak and, and just raise a couple points. Um, for council's, uh, attention. Um, just a quick point on the DC, uh, report. Again, it's much of a housekeeping type of report, but you may have noticed our DC reserve balances. Have gone from four point nine million to around three point nine million, about a decline of one million dollars. Um, that was lower than expected DC revenue that was primarily driving that, so. That will be a topic of conversation in future discussions or kind of, uh, lower than expected kind of. Revenues on the, the growth side. Um, but just wanted to highlight a few things on the investment, uh, report. So. The first thing, um, I wanted to point out was the decline in the overall, um, portfolio balances. So we had roughly. A thirty million dollar portfolio at the end of twenty-twenty-one. And the graph on the second page of the report kind of shows that, uh, breakdown. So there's three colors there. The blue, uh, color is those long-term investments. So you can think of those as kind of GIC type of investments. You know, they're five-year bonds, five-year GICs that they're not easy to cash. Usually we have to wait until they mature, um, for that. The, the, uh, red bar there is. Uh, related to our cash balance just on our general account, so that's our daily cash account. And then the other balances, we have a reserve account. We also have development charge accounts and other kind of accounts that are kind of lumped together. In those green bars. Um, you can see, um, since twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-four, um, all of the bars have gotten a little bit smaller. Um, particularly that, uh, red bar, that's our general cash balance. We had a bit of a cash crunch. Um, towards the end of twenty-twenty-four and even had to use some of those green bars to supplement those kind of daily. Um, cash activities, because you can't really draw the, um, blue bar, because those are those longer term investments. Even though a few of those did mature in twenty-twenty-four. And so I just wanted to, to point that out to you, because I don't think that was shown in previous investments reports. But it's also consistent with what we talked about before with our reserve balances. So there's not really a, there's not a direct one-to-one correlation between our investment balances and our reserve balances, but. You can reasonably assume that if we have large reserve balances, we probably have a lot of money to invest in a lot of cash. We have lower reserve balances, we have, um, less cash. So the second point I just wanted to again point out for council's information is the yield on the investment. So that's essentially our investment return. So in previous years, just the methodology we used to calculate that investment return. The way we used to do it is we essentially took that ending balance at the end of the year, which is generally a lower balance than it is. At other times in the year and we took the to- total investment income earned over the year. And then divided it by that ending balance and, you know, one divided by the other would give you a percentage. Um, and historically, that number's been overstated and the reason is if we have, um, say, I'm just going to use a number. Twenty million dollars at the, uh, middle of the year and we only have five million dollars at the end of the year. We earn the interest really on that average balance, that twenty million dollars. Where if you're calculating it on that five million, it's going to look like you're making more money, essentially if you're using a closing balance. So for this report, I've been using an average balance. So that is why, that's one of the reasons why our investment yield is lower this year, but that's a more accurate number. And that's what I'm going to be using, um, going forward to kind of calculate a more realistic number. And just the last kind of, um, point to make is a lot of the longer term investments are. Um, the longer term investment income, because it's a smaller balance, a lot of that does go into reserves. So it's kind of a bit of a self-fulfilling prophecy that you have lower reserve balances, you're going to have lower investment income and then less money to put back into reserves. The other piece is a lot of the operating income, um, related to cash balances. Are really more related to that red kind of bar or the, maybe a little bit of that green bar as well. And so our investment income related to, uh, operating that goes into our operating budget is likely going to be lower. Because we have lower, um, cash balances. And so again, just to, for council's information, we have had quite, quite large surpluses in investment income. So this has kind of saved us a little bit in, in prior years. So it's probably going to have less of an impact and less of a cushion in future years as these investment balances, uh, decline. Um, but the good news is, um, hopefully we have the position posted as for the senior financial analyst. Um, I'm hoping to move towards, uh, more of an active management of this portfolio. Right now we pay. Um, RBC, uh, a commission on all our very investments. We also, they tend to pick kind of higher commission-based. Investments, they kind of steer us to those and I'm hoping we can increase to offset some of these declines. By kind of more proactively looking for better investments based on our rate of return rather than what commission, uh, we earn. So that position will help with that and hopefully, um, earn a little bit more, um, investment income. Um, but those were the, the, the key points I just wanted to point out. Uh, again, this is just for information. There's no decision for council, but I'm open to any questions, uh, just related to anything related to. This report or any of the other reports that were filed today.
Thank you for that. Did have one quick question. I probably should know this, but talks about holdings. Are somewhat outside the investment policy because of maturity dates. And you're, but you're also talking about reinvesting for twenty-twenty-nine expiration. So are we limited to two years in our new policy? Or what? How's that relate?
Uh, through you, Chair Schwintz, um. Normally, like we would, I, in prior years, we did include the entire investment policy. It is a rather lengthy document. So I didn't attach the entire policy, so I understand there could be confusion, um, related to this. The two-year, um, time horizon is really related to loan and trust companies. It's kind of a higher risk. Kind of thing. So in the investment policy, I listed that as two years maximum, just for those loan and trust. Company maturities. Anything else can be more than that. It can be five years. So any GICs or, you know, big banks or something like that. They're much less risky and we can still go the, the longer term. And the reason I mentioned twenty-twenty-nine, there's another graph in there that shows when the different investments mature. And so that's what we try to do. We try to have roughly like two million dollars maturing every year. So if we need it, we can use that. And then we just hadn't invested anything in two, twenty-twenty-nine. So as we have more cash to invest, that's where we would. You know, call up and ask for a. Four-year GIC, instead of do my math, four-year GIC to mature in twenty-twenty-nine.
Thanks. I didn't understand the loan and trust distinction. Any other questions on the report? Mary Shuntz?
Thank you. I'm trying to, uh, stretch my memory back. I think some years ago. We talked about, and I think we ended up actually doing some internal borrowing for a project. From a reserve. Does, I, I know you weren't here, but is that twigging anything with you? Did we end up doing that or is my memory flawed?
Uh, through the chair, we did, we have done some internal borrowings, some kind of recorded, some less recorded. There was, uh, there was the, the street light project was an internal borrowed and there was a hot mix, uh, asphalt resurfacing program. Um, that we were essentially paying ourselves back. It wasn't considered really an investment. It was really a repayment. Um, but council did decide during the last budget process to kind of just. Clear up that and just take that directly from the reserve. So it wasn't necessarily included in the investment return.
So how does that fit into this picture then? You said, so we, we took it right out of the reserve and paid it off. Is that what you're saying? So, so. You said, so we, we took it right out of the reserve and paid it off. Is that what you're saying? So, so right now. There is nothing sitting there that sort of one hand owes the other hand.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, and it was, it wasn't included in here. It was essentially, it was, we didn't make any money because we were essentially. Paying ourselves back what we already. So we didn't, we didn't pay interest. This is just really external interest from the bank and from those longer term GIC type investments.
Okay, but good, sorry if I can just so, but going back to the reserves, which I think was another report in here. Just, just so I'm clear, there, there's no sort of in, internal borrowing left. Sort of that where, where one department, one project is still paying off a reserve that we borrowed from. Previously, that's. That's all clear now.
Through, through the chair, in simple terms, I think the question you're asking is, is yes, it's, it's all cleared off. I just want to point out, we still do have an internal borrowing related to the Y or the Bresla Drain One. Project that we're still kind of paying back that working capital reserve. Once we get external debenture financing, we'll pay back. That reserve, but that was less of a like planned kind of repayment schedule and more kind of a, we're just borrowing it for the cash. Essentially.
Any other questions? Not seeing any. Thank you very much, Mr. Lynn. I guess we need a motion to receive this report for information. Counsel Kado, Counsel Bryant, all in favor? We've received it. Moving on to other business, do any members of council wish to give a reporter an update? Mayor Shontz.
Yeah, I'll just tell council that the, the, the motion that you made about Love Singer Line. And looking at a rural speed strategy is coming to regional council on Tuesday. Sustainability, we changed the names. It's SID, sustainability, infrastructure and maybe development. At nine o'clock on next Tuesday. So just so you know, it's coming to council then and I. Hope that we'll get regional approval on it. It's very similar to the motion that we made here, so.
Thank you, Mayor Shontz. Any other updates? I'm not seeing any, any discussion on the outstanding activity list. Not seeing any there. So that brings us to the end of the committee of the whole meeting for this evening. On behalf of council. Thank you to all those who watched here or at home and we sincerely appreciate all those who took the time to participate tonight. Would anybody like to make one more motion to adjourn? Counsel Kado, Counsel Burgess. All in favor, we're adjourned. Good evening, everyone.